Good evening and welcome to the March 13th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Spohays?
Here.
Mr. Spinelli?
Here.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Strick?
Here.
Mr. Looney?
Here.
Mr. Spring has been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have a motion to adopt the minutes for February 6th, 2017? Thank you, Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Strick. Any objection or addition to the minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Next up is disclosures. Mr. Walker, any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Ms. Bailey?
None.
Mr. Looney?
Yes, I'd like to disclose as far as that case number 2016-0127 is, of course, most of that action happened before I was a commissioner. I have tried to bring myself up to speed in most of the information. I'll do my best.
So, thank you. The, our legal, the municipality's legal team decided that you are eligible to participate provided that you listen to the public hearing portion of that case. So, not all of our deliberations to date, but the one evening of public hearing, at least that's what I saw. Is that what's been explained to you?
That's my understanding. So, I think October 17th, if I recall.
Has it been that long ago?
Well, I hope I have the right date. I did listen to quite a bit of that meeting earlier today.
Very good. So, we appreciate having another eye, and as we go through these, clearly we've not taken any formal action on any of the issue response items. We've just made recommendations and committee the whole. So, at some point when we deliberate finally, we'll all have to become up to speed once again on every one of those items. But, thank you, Brian, for being able to participate on that. Mr. Strick, disclosures?
Yes, in the case, matter of the consent agenda, case number 2017-010, 011, and 014, I was not present for either of those, so will not be voting on the, during the consent agenda approval.
Thank you, Mr. Strick. Mr. Spinelli?
Yeah, on the consent agenda cases 2017-0012, 2017-0030, I was absent for those and will not participate.
Great, thank you. Ms. Barker?
I could just say ditto.
For 1A and 1B as well?
1A and 1B as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barker. Mr. Spohays?
Same items on the consent agenda.
1A?
A and 1B.
1B. And I have no disclosures, otherwise we have votes for those resolutions, we do. Okay. Before I get in to the consent agenda, could I have a motion? Mr. Strick, go ahead.
As part of our housekeeping here this evening, I'd like to rearrange part of the agenda, and the first motion would be to identify case 2017-0028, which was postponed, and so that one is to remove that.
So, motion is to postpone case 2017-28, is there a second? And that motion is to postpone specifically to a date, correct?
Correct.
And that date is, is?
April 3rd.
April 3rd, 2017. Okay, any objection to that motion? Seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any objection? Okay, hearing none, that UAA case is postponed to April 3rd. Go ahead, Mr. Strick.
And on another one, on case number E1, case number 2016-0127, would move that we vote to move that to after the public hearing to facilitate this evening's meeting.
So, motion to reorder the land use plan map case till after the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Spohays. Any objection to that? Hearing none, that agenda is reordered, that there's one public hearing case, so that will come after case 2017-25. Next up is, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Strick?
So?
Can I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Looney. Any items on the consent agenda notwithstanding not being able to vote because of not being present that you'd like to pull? Mr. Strick?
Yes, I'd like to pull resolution 2017-007 and pull that for discussion.
207-007, that has to do with Chapter 2 of the municipal design criteria, drainage chapter. Any other items wishing to be pulled? Seeing none, any objection to approving the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, the remainder of the consent agenda is approved. Mr. Strick?
Yes, thank you. In the matter of resolution 2017-007, I would move to approve the resolution.
Move to approve that resolution? Can I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Looney, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Strick.
Yes, as part of the discussion, in reviewing the resolution as it's currently written, I have some concern that we don't address, or I don't see addressed, the, any notations regarding existing developments and how they might be brought into compliance or impacted by this resolution. And so, my concern is what the minutes have picked up, what the hearings picked up in our conversations, I don't see it into the resolution itself. But, my concern is how, we used the example during our discussion, and I just use it strictly as an example, a site similar to Diamond Center, and how it might, if it develops into further development, how it might be asked to be brought into compliance with the new regulation or new stipulations here. And, as I recall, we were dealing with new developments as it pertained to an existing development site, but I still think we have a gray area on how existing developments would be brought into compliance.
So, I think, and I'm not sure that we have staff that was, that was dealing with that case, right? John, I don't think you were working on that one. And so, I think the question is, at this point, we can't make new findings, but your question is, I know we discussed it. I don't know whether we discussed it and made specifically a finding related to existing development. I think, I'll ask the rest of the commission if they recall how that, how that transpired.
I recall the discussion, I don't recall a finding. And so, my concern is, do we need to identify a finding or go back into the minutes or to the hearing and identify and address this? And I'm open to the rest of the body's discussion, you know, am I making something out of nothing or is it of concern? But, it just, it just think that this is a major resolution that is being pushed through, that we've got to have a little pause and think here about how the impacts to existing development sites will be impacted, let alone a brand-new development site.
So, go ahead, and Mr. Spinelli, you're going to speak to this, but I'm not sure that you were even here during that case, as I just heard, so.
I actually listened.
You did?
To the audio. I didn't bother to mention it because I thought you guys would just sail this thing through. So, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk, but I could say something.
Yep, you can speak. You're on the commission, go for it.
My take on the DCM is that it has drastic impacts that nobody could realize.
I thought you were going to talk about that. You, you, and I, and I, and I'm not sure, we made that finding.
I'm speaking to Mr. Strick's comments that I think that it could be a huge, oh, unintended consequences come back around six months from now if it goes through.
Okay, so, here's, here's your, Mr. Spinelli, it sounds like you would have rather been in, with us than in Hawaii when that came up, I'm sure. He's not going to be voting on this. I think that the issue is, there's, there's no way, we don't have the minutes in front of us from that meeting. We actually have not adopted the minutes from, from that meeting, so we can't quickly reference at least the written record here. So, you have two options. One is, we can, we can call vote as it is, or you can, you can make a motion to postpone until you, or we could ask staff, or we could ask to wait for the minutes and see whether or not the minutes reflect in our findings, conversation really, but we cannot make new findings that were not clearly part of the findings when we dealt with the case.
Well, at a minimum, I believe that we should wait till the actual minutes then are derived, and that gives an opportunity for staff and during the preparation of those minutes to identify this particular topic or address it.
So, could you want to make a motion to postpone? And my guess is, and I'll look to Lori, but my guess is, if our next regular meeting is the 1st of April, is it, is it safe to assume we'll have the minutes by then? So, why don't you go ahead and postpone it?
And before I ask for the postponement, does anyone within staff understand the cycle that this particular resolution is set to meet the assembly and be presented? Is there a schedule that we are now diverting from?
Probably.
Any unintended consequences we're not aware by pulling this for postponement?
That, you know, through the chair, Mr. Strick, that I do not know, but I'll bring it up tomorrow.
So, hearing none, I would move that we would postpone the?
Do you ever submit anything into the, into the, what is it called, the pay system or the, do you ever do that before you have a resolution? To at least get it going?
No.
Do you wait until you have the resolution, until you submit it?
Yes.
No exceptions?
To my knowledge, we, yeah, we don't put it into pays before we get that resolution.
Okay. So, Lori's suggesting you could make a motion to, to staff, to ask them to affirm whether or not it's in there, specifically your concern is in there, and if it's not clearly in the record, then we would approve as is, if it's in there, and that would not then hold up the timeline, if, if there is in fact a timeline to?
Well, in theory, that's what I did when I moved to review and postpone until the minutes were received, giving staff opportunity then to address.
Yeah, no, the only issue is, we're the 13th of March today, so you'll be waiting for sure until whatever that April meeting is, versus whether they can, they could review and administratively make that call so that it would continue.
Understood, and I would concur with that motion.
So, how would we say that? We'd make a motion?
Well, we have a motion on the floor now.
So, you don't want to postpone? It's a condition to approve?
Yes, yeah, I think we're going to have to have, bring it back to the motion to approve,
and somehow, I don't, I have no idea whether it really stands from a parliamentary standpoint, but what I do know is this is, it's not a case per se, right? It's our recommendation to the assembly, so there's a little more leeway. But, I think with that, you would, you would withdraw your motion to postpone, we would be back to the motion to approve, and you would, you would ask to approve contingent upon review, additional review of the record to confirm whether or not there's a specific finding related to the proposed Chapter 2 and existing development.
I think I've got that. So, the motion on now is for approval, which we then vote on pending resolution, then we move to a review.
I think what you're asking staff is to administrate, and I'll come to you, Brandon, in a second, but administratively check whether or not there was a finding omitted that pertained to the existing development and the new standards for drainage. In the event that there was no finding, then it is approved as is.
Right.
In the event that it was omitted, then we would expect to come back with a resolution next meeting.
What he said.
Can I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Looney. Brandon, you had?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering if approving it, I mean, the word approval seems a little misleading in this case, and are we, are we setting ourselves on autopilot here for this thing to just slip away from us and then not get the opportunity to memorialize Greg's concern?
Yeah, so the issue is very simple, and it's up to the, it's up to the body what we want to do. We can either approve it, we can try to do, what we're trying to do is conditionally approve it in such a way that it doesn't hold things up, or we can simply postpone it, and, and that just, that just comes back two, three weeks from now. That's, and that's fine, too.
Well, my only thought was just going to be that, I don't have a problem postponing it. If we want to make sure that we get this right, I don't feel like we need to rush this thing through.
That's fine.
And I don't think we're going to hold up anybody's project, so, that's, that'd be my thoughts, just to.
Anyone else wishing to comment on that, on that, what is now a motion to approve? Brian, go ahead.
I think a lot of times, I've only been here a few meetings, but we approve most cases with conditions, in a way. So, we could approve this with the condition that that finding is in there.
Yeah, so here's, here's the, and it's a fair point, here's the difference. We've already acted on the case itself with our conditions. What is before us is the resolution to capture our findings for the formal record. So, that, we deal with a case, the resolution always comes back to us at a subsequent meeting. So, that's what you have. We're not, we're not reopening the case, and that's what I meant. If we didn't talk about it and we didn't make a finding, we don't have the ability to add that finding at this point, even if it would have been the best finding that we could have, should have made in the world, right? So, really, all we're asking to do is, in the absence of having minutes, to, to actually just approve the resolution. So, that's where we're at. We have the motion of this conditional approval on the floor right now, whether it's legit or not, right? And there is a second, I think I saw a second to Greg's motion. That does pass, and I, and I do appreciate Brandon's point, I think it's a good one. I guess what I would say is, in fairness to staff, if we had, if we had been able to email them ahead of time to just fully understand what their timeline was before the meeting, I think then we could have known one way or the other, hey, the whole thing falls apart or, or not. So, I'm not putting you on the spot, Mr. Strick, but I?
No, thank you. And part of my point is that the, the recording, the recordings would show, not just within the minutes, but would show the discussion having taken place, and it's to validate that those discussions were in there and identified, so that from a historical perspective, we can go back to intent, we can go back to the?
Well, no, you just bear this in mind, though. I mean, we could have talked about this, we could have totally talked about it, we could have had questions with Melinda and others there, but if it was not explicitly a finding when the motion was on the table, it won't be captured in there. And that's, and, and that's pretty clear how, how parliamentary procedure works. We, we can't just, that's why this land use plan map stuff, I mean, when we actually get to passing all these things, it's when that motion is on the floor, not what we talked about in November, right? That's the trick. So, I get it, it's all the more reason that if you hear a good issue that you want to bring up and you want to establish for the record to make that finding very clear, either during the motion or immediately after we, we, we vote on it.
Well, I guess we'll just have to rely on Mr. Spinelli to show up to the hearing at the assembly.
At the assembly, that's right. Brandon, were you, Mr. Walker, were you still in the queue or is that from before? You're good. Mr. Spohays?
Yeah, thank you. Just an item of clarification, I meant to hit abstain and I accidentally voted yes, but I think it passes regardless.
So, you're right. So, here's what happens, that motion fails, all for naught, it comes back to us in April, all right? There we go. Glad we don't have a full house tonight to watch this. Clear? And when it comes back, remember, remind me that Andre is not allowed to rehear the case all over again, it is what it is.
It was Mel Langdon and Kristy Bishak, not Melinda, didn't it?
It was Mel Langdon, but I think it was some, I think somebody else was here from PM&amp;E. Was that Melinda? I don't remember.
Kristy Bishak.
No, I know Kristy was here, but there was somebody else here from PM&amp;E. You're right.
What do you think?
Okay, what are we talking about? Why are you, why are you doing this to me? Okay.
I'm worn out for the evening, am I done?
Next up is case 2017-25, it's a public hearing case, petitioner is B&amp;T Investments LLC. They request us to rezone from RO to B3, generally located south of East Third, west of Ingra, north of East Fourth, and east of Hyder. I'll read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting. After staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including his or her representatives, 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, 5 minutes, and individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission, you may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. A request for rezone is a recommendation to the assembly. So, with that, can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One item to begin with is, in the supplemental packet that was passed out, there is a letter of non-objection from the Fairview Community Council that was received, and this is a request to rezone approximately .63 acres from RO to B3. This rezoning will allow for the owners of Pit Printing to expand their operations to keep up with demand. The planned construction of an expansion building would not fit within the current zoning district regulations for the need to have a building classified as business services establishment. Rezoning will allow them to build a new building that will fit their current business demands. None of the reviewing agencies objected to the rezone request. Long Range Planning Division has been in discussion with several property owners along Third Avenue to facilitate the property owners in their redevelopment efforts. The area is prime for redevelopment and repurposing of existing buildings and vacant lands. This area is adjacent to the Gamble Street Corridor Project. Some of the applicable Anchorage Bowl Comprehensive Plan policies are 21, 5, and 7. This property is identified in the generalized land use plan map as commercial and provides an appropriate use for the expansion of the existing printing facility. The proposed building that is expected to be approximately 5,000 square feet, which is compatible with the surrounding buildings. There are a few surrounding properties that are vacant, and the rezone will assist in the redevelopment efforts underway along this Third Avenue corridor. The general area contains a mix of commercial office and community service uses. The land use intensity is not anticipated to increase with this rezoning, and the OSH MP identifies Ingra Street as a Class 3C major arterial and Third Avenue as a 2A minor arterial. The rest of the areas, the rest of the lot is provided public utilities. The proposed rezoning to B3 meets the approval criteria for Title 21 zoning map amendments, the general intent and purpose of the B3 district, and the rezone will enhance the overall land use pattern and provide the property owners with the consistency that they need for current and future operations and development. As such, the department recommends approval of the rezoning to B3 General Business District. The petitioner and petitioner's representative is here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Odell. Any questions for staff? Ms. Bailey?
I think this was in the packet, but I can't find it right now. Did you say how long this property was vacant for?
No, I did not say how long it was vacant for. The petitioner would know, though.
Okay.
That might be a question for them, yeah.
Thank you.
I do know Google Street View shows it's vacant, so at least back 2011.
A question for you, you mentioned the Gamble Street Corridor Project area or something to that effect, what is that? I mean, I know what Gamble Street is, but did?
Hold on one second here, let me grab the file.
Okay.
The long-range planning comments just said that the area is adjacent to the Gamble Street Corridor, which realize a combination of mixed-use commercial, retail, and housing consistent with the Anchorage Downtown Comprehensive Plan and the Fairview Neighborhood Plan. So, I believe it's a, kind of a Gamble Street Corridor revitalization-type plan.
Mr. Davis, is it, is it a land use designation in other than downtown plan or the Fairview Plan?
Yes, I believe this general area is designated as a major city center in the Fairview Plan. If it happens to be in the downtown plan area, on the west side of the downtown Fairview planning boundary, it would be, you know, I believe DT2, which is downtown mixed-use. So, the, whether or not it's in the Fairview area or in the downtown plan area, it's a, it's basically a city center-type land use plan designation.
Okay, thanks. I see no other questions for staff. The petitioner want to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, planning staff. My name is Tom Drayer, and I am with S4 Group, and I represent the petitioner tonight, who is Mr. John Tatham, who's sitting right here of BT Investments. And he is the owner of Pit Printing. As you may know, Pit Printing owns about the half of the block just south of this, with a pretty nice-looking building. To the north of this area is PLI zoning, where the old hospital used to sit, and it's been cleared for quite a few decades. To the northeast of this property is I2 zoning, and to the east is B3 zoning, where another warehouse building has just gone up. To the west is a little leftover piece of RO zoning, and to the south, and the southeast, and the southwest, it's all B3 zone property. The MOA Long Range Planning Department states that this rezon is consistent with the 2020 comp plan, the downtown comprehensive plan, and the Fairview Neighborhood Plan. We took the plan both to the downtown community council and the Fairview Community Council, and they both approved of the, of the rezoning, went three times, the Fairview Community Council. We presented this case as, it's kind of like a guinea pig case for their land planning conference that they held. With that, the planning staff has done an excellent job on this, and I'll make myself available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drayer. Can you just tell me why, what were you going back and talking to them three times about?
Because they had set up a day-long comprehensive plan conference.
Yeah.
And they, and they wanted some cases to use to kind of test their scenarios and their ideas and whatnot.
And you must have passed because you have a letter in support here.
Yes, correct. Yes.
All right. I have a question for Ms. Bailey for you.
The same question I asked from, for staff, how long has this land been vacant?
John, you want to come up and?
Sure.
Please state your, your name for the record, too.
My name is John Tatham. I'm the owner of Pit Printing, partner in B&amp;T Investment. As regarding the vacancy on the lots in question, three of the lots have been vacant for over 30 years. I don't know if, if there's ever been anything built on them, and one lot, number four, at the time we moved in in 1986, there was a, it wasn't quite abandoned, but almost, small duplex there, that became abandoned and then was removed probably 12, 13 years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, I see no more questions, hang tight, I'm going to, you don't go far. I'd like to open the public hearing now for public testimony on case 2017-25. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward. Anyone at all? All right, Tom, any final, final thoughts?
No, I'll just be available for any questions.
Very good. Any final questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. What's the wish of the body? Mr. Spohays?
And the case of 2017-0025, move to approve the rezon.
Okay, recommended to approve, the assembly approval of the rezon, seconded by Ms. Barker. If you'd like to speak to your motion, Mr. Spohays?
Well, yeah, I think the petitioner went through all the proper channels, spoke to the community, didn't seem to have any uproar against it. It's got the community councils, like I say, approval, the PNZ's recommendation, I think that'll probably cover it.
Any other commissioners wishing to testify or comment? Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposed rezoning supports both the downtown and the Fairview Comprehensive Plan and promotes the redevelopment of underutilized areas on the edge of the downtown core.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. I'm going to support the rezon, I think it's also consistent with the approval card. I think it's also consistent with the approval criteria, 2103-160E, and rezonings under I do note that the community council's letter indicates that trees be incorporated into the design whenever possible. We didn't ask the petitioner, but I didn't see a whole lot of trees there. But to the degree that there are any, that's at least a desire. But with that, is there any objection to this rezon? Hearing none, the rezoning is approved. Thank you for your time. Okay, next up is Land Use Plan Map, case 2016-0127. Going to ask Mr. Davis to get us situated here this evening with both existing and new material, and then I guess I would also just remind people that you've been given a half-page with some potential meeting dates. I assume that's because we think we are not going to get through it at the second April meeting as well. So I ask that you complete those. But I will ask Mr. Davis of how many more meetings we think we need to get through all of our issues. So go ahead, Tom.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You have before you the March 13 draft of the Issue Response Table, eight-by-fourteen, which you received in hard copy last week. In addition to that, last week you received by email the cover memo identifying the issues that you will cover tonight. They are identified in green in the far-left column, as usual, and are listed here. And again, there are 28 new items on this list, and what we did in the cover memo was underline those that staff considered to merit the commission's deliberation individually. It's our suggestion. These tended to be issues that garnered more comment, or complicated, or are really substantive. Again, the underlined ones. The remaining ones on the list without underlines, staff suggests could be tentatively approved as a batch without individual discussion per item by the commission and its committee of the whole deliberations tonight, unless individual commissioners wish to pull those individually for discussion. So you could go through them at the start of your work and identify which ones, if any, you wish to pull, or if you just wish to go through them. That's the cover memo. We went ahead and gave you the supplement, although we gave you the memo by email. Here's the hard copy. So this is supplementary packet number one, which you laid at your place tonight. And there were a couple of corrections and additional information items that we wished we could have pulled off by last week for you, but we didn't. And so there are three issue items for tonight, which we have updated information about in the supplementary packet item two, which we laid at the table. And we'll continue to work hard to make sure that as much as possible in these meetings, you do get one main table and one main document to look at. But there were a couple of items there, and we'll point those out. So those are the three items for tonight. Behind the table, after the table, are several, five, Issue Response Item maps pertinent to some of tonight's items, and those you received hard copy with the Issue Response Table last week. They were behind the table. I forget whether they were stapled or whether they were separate, but we will also point out those when we get to the item. So those are the items for tonight. It's up to your pleasure whether you would like to address schedule going forward before working on these items tonight or at the end of the meeting. However, we have checked the meeting Assembly Chamber availability for the nights listed on this card, which each of you should have. If you don't, let me know. I can pass out these to you. This card is a paper poll regarding availability for a potential special meeting, either the last week in March or sometime around mid-April, because we do believe that we'll need two meetings. One to complete most or all of the remaining items that are left after tonight, and then a second meeting to bring it all back holistically and have the formal, final formal deliberations on the plan. So we do believe it will be two more meetings, and we would appreciate receiving this paper poll feedback from you all. It's basically for each night, attendance status in the far-right column. It's a yes, or no, or maybe, and that would help us zero in on which night or nights might be a candidate evening. Again, these are based on availability of Assembly Chambers. And with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Spinelli?
How long till you're done with all these comments?
Yeah, well, let me actually ask, because what I heard is, in addition to what we have here tonight, there's one more batch coming. Is that what I heard?
Yes, that's correct. We're going to try and make it one more batch. That would have been difficult to achieve if the commission had been able to hold its special meeting next week, because we would have had to complete all those items this week, of course, for you. But postponing the meeting a bit, the extra meeting a bit, does give staff a window of opportunity to complete most or all of the remaining issues in the next batch.
So just to be clear, in what we had talked about going back for a while, was that there's going to be, we're going to get through these batches, if you will, with our recommendation that you're helping us recall what our statement, at least within that meeting's discussion, was informally. And then we talked about needing at least a work session, at least one, prior to a final deliberation to kind of go through some of those, including some where we didn't reach consensus on those, so that we kind of work through a little bit more. You know, so just looking at the schedule, if we don't have a March meeting, and then we go presumably to the second meeting in April, or are we potentially going to the... Do we know anything about the first meeting in April caseload?
I don't recall specifically. My understanding is typically those first meetings are booked with cases. I wouldn't be surprised if March 3, you know, you might, you know, without knowing for sure, that may be full. One of us here can put in a quick call to maybe one of our staff members.
That'd be great, because all I'm seeing on April 3 is a time extension for natural resource extraction, at least on our calendar, unless that's really old. And if that's the case, I would say we'll just go on the 3, and then we'd go again on the 10, and then we'd figure out if we needed another date for a final deliberation.
We're going to try to find out here, and if March 3 has a lot of space, we'll grab it.
Yeah.
Yep.
April 3. Because I'm actually amazed, but I've got people signing up to go to a meeting on Friday night. You people are... Not him. It's like, my wife would kill me.
To speak to that comment, though, why aren't we limiting ourselves to the availability of the Assembly Chambers for the establishment of these meetings? Why do the meetings have to occur here?
It's because they're still being recorded, right?
And we can't do that in the...
And we're still... We could, it's just because it's a lot harder for Lori.
Okay.
No, again, I've been asking for the reason for extra meetings. If we have meetings on our calendar already, then let's go there. So anyway, you can find out. Is that it, Mr. Striker, or you got something else? I think he's good. So, Tom, you ready for us to jump into this list?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I will remind the Commission that we have a main motion on the floor made way back when, November 14, 2016, to approve the land use plan map, public hearing draft. That motion is before us. Could I get a motion to go into the Committee of the Whole? Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Striker. Any objection? Okay, we are now in the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to suggest that we look at the cover memo and initially look at... Well, I'm going to make the assumption that everything underlined, we would like to hear about. Is that an accurate assumption? Do I have anyone that objects to having staff walk through the underlined items? So we'll do that. So how about the non-underlined items? Are there items that commissioners would like to pull from those non-underlined items? Are we prepared to do that, like we did the last time? It seemed to work relatively well. How about Mr. Walker?
When you say underlined, you mean the green items?
Okay, so I'm going to just the one-pager, and if you haven't cross-referenced it, it might be a bit challenging. We don't have to do it like this. We could just go to that item, would be the other way we'd do it, and then just ask if there's any discussion on that item, and then we'd move right along. Okay? That's the other way we can do it. Or we could sort of go through this list and pull them, and only go to them if we look at them. But if you haven't cross-referenced it, then we can just jump straight to OA, and I can say, anyone got any issues with OA, 0A? And then if not, then we move on to the next one. Does that work for people? That works? Danielle? Yes, that works? Okay, so we're going to do that. And then I'm going to go to staff on the underlined ones, but I'm going to ask the Commission first on the non-underlined items to see if we want to bring it up and have either a staff presentation, or better yet, if you just have something you'd like to clarify, we'll start there and go to staff if we need to. So 0A is the first item, your first green item in your table. Anyone have a question, clarification, disagreement with staff's recommendation? I think this is just saying we're going to take care of technical edits, right? Okay. No issues. Let's move on to 0E. Any questions on this one? I have a question on this one. So the recommendation is to just include this graphic? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
I assume that the graphic will be amended if there's an amendment to the targeted area or additional discussion about that RFA area that prompts us to change the graphic? Is that accurate?
Yes, the final graphic would reflect all the appropriate numbers in the action items and any other policy items.
So can we just maybe put in that column, just ensure consistency with P&amp;Z's final action for that graphic?
Yes, that's great.
That'd be great. Any other issues on that one? Okay. Next up, 1L. And this is an underlined one, so, you know, Mr. Davis, I'm going to assume that we've all read it, or at least glanced through it. If you can just summarize briefly why you felt it was important to want to speak through it or clarify it.
Through the chair, members of the Commission, John Cecil, this one was assigned to me. So 1L reflects some questions that we received from the Chamber of Commerce during our consultations, and I think it also came up for discussion with the commission at a work session. I don't recall exactly which one. But what we've attempted to do here is address questions of, you know, where are there additional parcels that could be used, particularly for housing in the Anchorage Bowl? And so we've, in our narrative, attempted to explain, you know, we've talked with the appropriate agencies within the muni, we've talked to others outside of the municipality, including Jay Bear, Siri, and others, to find those potential pieces of land property, federal agencies as well. And a lot of that information is documented in the industrial lands assessment that we concluded here a little while back. So that's essentially what 1L addresses. I think we also... We have a recommendation to work with the Matsu Borough in the future as well for coordination of potential growth between the two jurisdictions. Tom, did I miss anything?
No, this was important to a number of stakeholder groups, and it was actually a comment by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. And so we wanted to make sure that you saw, that those stakeholders saw, that we took a no-stone-left-on-turn approach, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment or question for Ms. Bailey than Mr. Striker?
I want to speak towards the amended action item, 88. I didn't really see any support for that change based on the discussion of what was brought up earlier. Additionally, I'm very uncomfortable with that finding, because it seems to be that we have a lot of a development plan, but we... One thing I had asked at the beginning was that there be a park and trail plan, and without that, I'm not comfortable having something codified in here that seems to take away that when we haven't heard any justification for this specific purpose. And so I wouldn't be in favor of amending action item 88.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Can I just ask, isn't the municipality in the process of going through and figuring out which parks have either the appropriate zoning? And in that evaluation, is that happening currently? Remind me.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, yes, that is... Current planning is working on that project.
Is it safe to assume that that sort of evaluation is happening when that zoning is occurring, that you're sort of analyzing something related to the... Whether it's a park or not a park, or...
Through the chair, I believe that current rezoning is a housekeeping measure, that they are just simply identifying the dedicated parks that were dedicated by the Assembly for rezoning, so that they're very limited to a housekeeping measure.
Okay, so, Ms. Bailey, basically, your comment is, would you recommend scratching 8A, 88?
I'm not in favor of scratching 88. I'm not in favor of how they've modified, amended 88. I'm fine with determining which municipal parks are not yet dedicated parklands for potential consideration to full dedication status, but I'm not in favor of their second part of this. I think if we adapt their amendment, then what we're essentially having is only looking at development, we're not looking at preservation, and so that's my concern.
So you would keep it without the amended language?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Striker, are you speaking to this or something else?
No, I'm speaking to this.
Okay, go ahead.
The purpose of this process is looking at the comments and issues. We address it with response and recommendations, and then we take action. As I read the original comments or issue, it seems like the response and recommendations have gone way past the original comments. The original comment seems to deal with, how do we acquire more land within the municipality through various means, one of which is through the Jay Bear, or through the state, through its 14,000 acres that are still outstanding? Now, all of a sudden, we're talking about what to do with the land, and we're using terms such as urban development, when I believe that the comment or issue deals with, how do we acquire more land for the city? Yet now, we've gone into a response and recommendation that goes into turning stuff into parklands and turning it into other capacities. Are we reading way too much into the original comment or issue?
That is a question you're directing the staff.
It's a question for the staff.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, the, the response and recommendations don't seem to mirror back to the original comments.
The majority of the response documenting our search for large tracts of undeveloped land within the municipality are primarily, primarily the response to the, to the chamber. The chamber, as we understood their comment, was very interested in, in the muni identifying additional, additional land base from Jay Bear, Chiakigal River, state and federal lands. And most of our, our response is essentially kind of a no change to the sense that we, we believe that the plan and our analyses, we're already doing as, as much as we can to identify those lands. And they're, after a lot of work, there's just not as much out there, we believe, as what the chamber believes in its comment. The second paragraph in the comment tries to allude to comments we've received in work sessions and elsewhere, that we, that we seek within the bowl, public lands that haven't been, public lands, muni, state, that are deemed or could be deemed excess to public need. And, and so if we have excess land that's currently open space, undeveloped PLI land that's not, not, not devoted to future use, or a school site that's found not to be needed, then the comment was, because we are in such a housing land deficit, that, that we should use those lands or, or see if those lands could appropriately be used. And that's the second comment that we attempted to respond to. The, the change in highlights is somewhat a, a local tailored version of boilerplate language we see in comprehensive plans from other central cities that are surrounded by other communities, other landowners. And what we are trying to do there is to demonstrate to the chamber and to others that we do have a policy that we are continuing to communicate with these other communities, major landowners, and seeking to coordinate where growth occurs with them to everyone's benefit. And that was the intent of that second, that first highlighted change.
No, and I appreciate that. And it's just, I guess I would move to just try to keep it simple, strategic, and on point. And let's not try to divert away, but address the concern. I think you've done it and you've done it three or four times, but then it just seems to ramble on.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Strike. Ms. Bailey?
I just wanna, I'm still a little confused on why there was an amendment to eight-eight. You said it was to, to address open space areas, but that's very different from both designated and dedicated parklands. So I, I agree with Commissioner Strike that this is just kind of taking a comment and running it too far.
Hey, Ms. Bailey, why, why don't you just see if there's, if there's support for striking that amended language in eight-eight?
Are we doing motions or are we just doing informally?
Well, it's fairly informal at this point.
Is there anyone opposed to leaving action eight-eight as it was prior to?
I have no objection. Let's just look at action eight-eight. And I think what you're doing is you're, you're just, you're getting rid of the underlined information and, and putting parks backwards, it parkland, so putting it the way it originally was.
Correct.
Good? Everybody good with that? Any issue? So you could have that reflected, that that's the commission's desire to keep it as is. I'd like to go back. Tom, go ahead. You wanted to, are you, you're in the queue?
I apologize. Technical edit on the first line, if we could keep the underlines and changes on the first line of eight-eight, those are technical. Staff suggested those to me as a clarification without changing the content. Thank you.
So what are you talking about? Just read, read it so we know what's going on. What?
In action eight-eight, the, the first line contains a couple of track changes, which I was made to understand are, are just improvements to clarify what was there before. If, if those-
So you'd like to keep the yet slash the parks and put the parkland? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would not be in favor of that. I think it makes it unclear, 'cause this item specifically addresses, what it was addressing was designated and dedicated park status. And now it's changing it to parkland in general. It's a very different thing. What it was originally addressing was identifying all the designated and dedicated parklands within the Anchorage Bowl and evaluating which designated parks should be moved to dedicated parks because those have different requirements within the state and so, within the municipality. So if we, I don't think these are technical edits at all. It changes the very meaning behind it.
So let's clarify what your recommendation is then. Could you just read it, Ms. Bailey?
Determine which municipal parks are not yet dedicated parks for potential consideration to a full dedicated status.
I have no problem with that. Anyone else? So if you could, that's our recommendation. You don't have to agree with us when we move this forward, right? You can reflect it differently, but that's how we'd like to move it. I'd like to go back to the, the writing in yellow. As I read the chamber's comment, I don't understand what the Matsu Borough has to do with it. The chamber is asking us to look at other non-municipal landowners within the municipality of Anchorage, I presume. I presume they're not saying annex portions of the Matsu Borough. Right? So in my mind, if we wanna reflect that we've actually heard the comment, and I frankly think the comment is good and ought to be stated very strongly, that in the case that we have access military land or that there is land that flows back to the municipality from Ekutna, or whatever that is, that we ought to look at the viability. There's land in Muldoon that is on the near side of the fence, that I think if you were to strategically go and look, I think you could make a compelling argument that it already is kind of parceled off. And you could build whole subdivisions back there. And I'm not saying that they'll jump up and down and give it to you, but I think that if you were to scrutinize it, you'd actually, I can, I can show you one that, that's right by our development, that I think we could put another 400 housing, 400 housing units in there, and it's on the near side of the fence. So, I mean, I think that that's what we really wanna say, something along the lines of continuing to look for land that can be incorporated into municipal land, not just to understand where growth's gonna occur. That's generally what we do with planning anyway. I mean, this, this comment has to do with looking for those parcels. But, but I'd like to also get rid of the Matsu in that statement. I don't think the Matsu has anything to do within that context, at least that's how I read it. So I, Brian, you're in there.
Actually, I really just wanna follow up exactly what you're saying. It was a few years ago where, on the, I guess, the west end of Raspberry Road, as you enter Kincaid Park, FCC had some property that they no longer needed. And I think it, I think the city could have actually acquired that. I don't think it actually happened. But it's one of those things where if an opportunity came up, if we just keep looking for those opportunities, right here in, in the bowl itself, there's land, land tracts that would work out very well.
No, and to echo that, we had the FAA, we had NOON, we had the National Guard. They gave up a number of different parcels throughout the city as a result, that the city could have stepped in maybe a little harder and acquired.
So is there, it, I, I think, I'd like it to reflect more what the, where you read, what the comment or issue is, but in an affirmative, I don't think we need to state it here today, but something along the lines that the municipality will continue to look for the acquisition, you know, the, pursue actions and policies that could acquire additional land where possible from the following entities, you know, where appropriate. But something to that effect. Would I have general support for that notion rather than how it's written? Okay, thumbs up. Does that give you enough guidance, Tom?
Yes, thank you. We can revise it to reflect that and you'll see it by April.
Great, thanks, thank you. That's one L. So next up, one N. It is not an underlined item. Tom, are you still in the queue or is that from before?
It's me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you're showing up as Mr. Davis? Do both of you guys pop up as Mr. Davis tonight? So, no, I, I'm not going to one N yet, John. I'm just gonna ask if we're, if we have given, so it's not one of the underlined items. So staff has made a recommendation to add a sentence. On one N, anyone have an issue or wishing clarification with the staff recommendation? Has to do with clarification related to area-specific plans. Anyone have issue? No issue. So staff's recommendation, we agree with staff's recommendation there. One O is an underlined item. We have a staff, brief staff breakdown on that, which, which ultimately ends up in no changes, so don't, don't dwell on it too long here.
This was a concern and observation from several different directions, including internally, that the land use plan map is very many categories. It appears complicated. And we wanted the commission to be aware of the efforts that have been made that have resulted in the public hearing draft and how this, how this, this, we responded to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I mean, in reality, when it comes to a development proposal, are we really distinguishing these various commercial designations? You know, does it fundamentally, I mean, I get if we're kind of center city versus not center city, but, but, I mean, I, I've always wondered how we, we distinguish commercial corridor from mixed-use corridor, you know, really does it? And I think that's the heart of the comment, that we're just, we don't see, and I don't wanna call it level of sophistication in development, but we really just don't, we don't see such intensive development to be able to distinguish between some of those things. And I think that's what BOMA's saying here.
There's the, the current Title 21 and, and then the variety of future districts and regulations and incentives that this plan and adopted plans around the bowl recommend. Currently, Title 21 does distinguish some of these areas in, in a limited way. For example, the height limits in the commercial districts are, are now already quite sensitive to whether an area is designated as a city center or is more of a local neighborhood center. And there is, in the current code, admittedly, a lot lacking in order to be able to distinguish these areas. And this plan is forward-looking. While the current level of development is, is often single-story, even in midtown, we believe that the, the plan is looking forward to a future in which there is more vertical, compact development. And, and, and it is looking forward to a time when we will begin to see multi-story development. And at that point, it'd be very important to have designated the, the scale and intensity to development in a way that matches the neighborhood and the capability of the public infrastructure in that area to handle that intensity. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. So this, this results, I mean, I will say that I do like the comment that simpler is better. Not sure we always achieve that, but, but anyone else, this results in a no change? Anyone have anything else to add on, on item one O? Seeing none, we'll move on to item one P. Staff comment on that one.
Again, these were some comments that we received from several different stakeholders. And, and once again, recommendation for no change as far as this particular item goes, but it also refers to a change we've already made in a related issue, item one G, essentially to respond to further comments about transit-supported development corridors from members of the public concerned about how they may raise density over the land use plan map densities, and then from the transportation agencies internal to the muni. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the commission? And so what are we actually, so when Fairview says that they have their own land use plan map and we, are, are we in fact then changing their land use plan map by calling a transit corridor along 15th?
No. The land use plan map for the land use plan for the bowl matches or is consistent with the color-coded land use plan for the same areas in Fairview, except for a few areas where we, we point out elsewhere, but not here. The, the land use plan map basically, and the Fairview and the other plans, they provide a range of densities, eight to 12 dwelling units per acre and the, you know, low, moderate density neighborhood, AKA R2M zone. And what may, what we stay here may occur is that if the transit-supported development corridor is, is successfully implemented, it may push future densities or may encourage future densities of residential to be more towards the higher end of that range than the lower end of the range, but still within the range set out for the low, moderate density Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments on one P? Okay, moving on to column number two, two-B addendum.
Mr. Chair, Thede Tobish. This is addressing what we got as very detailed comments from one individual and quite a few generalized comments from the public, as well as input from the commission at two of the different meetings, seeking ways to provide for more potential small-scale commercial uses in, throughout the city, specifically in, mostly in residential areas. Our response highlights where in the code that's allowed now. To some degree, we talk on the shortcomings of the code, the area, et cetera. And so we, we thought that possibly an elegant, an elegant way to address this was to create a new section in the conditional use provisions that would allow this under very circum, very strong conditions and a series of circumstances that would allow it. We don't have any details beyond that right now, so I wanted to just highlight that the key to this action would be how to frame those conditions so that it's controlled and compatible with the neighborhoods.
And I would, might I suggest, I'm gonna go to Mr. Strike in a second, but maybe for starters, that it is highlighted in an, in a, a small or area plan?
Yes, we recognize that that's the case now. And that's how some of the, that's how the rustic goat got started. It was in the West Anchorage District Plan as a potential small-scale commercial. Some of the plans have not done that type of detail in their land use map. So this is a provision that allows for those circumstances.
Yeah, I just, I worry that, I get how that addresses the comment. The flip side of that comment is a lot of fear that suddenly you could have a bunch of commercial popping up where a neighborhood doesn't want it. And if you at least constrain it to a local planning process, then it will be vetted, you know, in some way, shape, or form. Just a thought, I don't know how we, how we get there at the end of the day, but I would be concerned if I were on the other side, oh, this is how you get something in every, every neighborhood that's out there. I got a couple of other comments. Mr. Strike?
It's, it's a double-edged sword. And I'll echo what Mr. Robinson was saying, but I appreciate the avenue that you're not closing the door, but leaving it open, but in doing so, that's the double-edged side of the equation here. I like the approach, but again, it, where somebody would think that the process is resolved, that nothing, nothing's gonna be built, now there's a door that's cracked open to come back in. I think that's appropriate, given the Title 21, the changes that have occurred, and the unintended consequences that we've seen. So I like the solution. I think we just have to be aware- I think we just have to be aware of the increase in public hearing testimony we might hear as a result, when we look at a case-by-case basis of development.
We certainly anticipate that, and just reminded that the conditionally-used changes would be a public process to start it, that we would engage with the community councils before we even got the provisions changed.
Any, so this becomes an action item to create these conditional use standards and criteria?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff? Any objection to the recommendation and how they've proposed to deal with it? So, general support? Thumbs up? Thumbs up. 2K, go ahead, Mr. Strike.
You hit 2K. I was just going to comment on 2K.
Go for it.
Building height, downtown area, two-story, four-story. The one thing I don't see in the response and recommendations, a lot of this, I believe, is also, as a result, a seismic orientation or seismic areas downtown. I don't see that addressed, or is that a not applicable as part of this comment recommendation?
Yes, it is applicable, and to us, it was an important observation as well. In the response, we do mention that in the beginning or our second paragraph, parts of downtown include seismically or historically sensitive areas. And in the downtown, land use designation itself, on page 33 of the draft plan, and I think the commission's already done some work on revising and clarifying this, it also discusses that, in fact, there are seismically induced ground failure areas that may have a lower intensity. Thank you.
You good, Mr. Strike? Anyone else? I'm good with it. I have trouble mandating four stories. I just don't think it's realistic in all situations. 2L, any issue with the, what appears to be a reduction from half-mile to quarter-mile? Mr. Strike, you still in there? Mr. Davis?
Yes, I'm actually getting ready for item 3B addendum number two. Sorry.
Well, it's not underlined, so you may not get to deal with it. Okay, 2L, anybody on 2L? Everybody's good with 2L. 3B addendum number two. Is there something you just gotta share, Tom, or is it, should we see if we got comments?
There really is. In your supplement packet number two, it is one of three issue items where we have added information for you. After sending last week's issue response, we were informed by park staff that they had had the opportunity to re-listen to the minutes recording of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they provided some clarification in the left column in yellow as to the, some of the discussion that that commission had regarding why it recommended the airport expansion area be removed from Point Warrens Off Park. And we wanted to make sure that that was documented. And in our turn, we've provided in the right-hand column in yellow additional information in our response responding to that information. And it basically boils down to, the commission was concerned that the airport expansion would require relocating the sewer treatment plant, which would be, you know, extremely And that was one reason why that commission believed that an airport second runway, north-south runway, is not likely. And in our response, you see there in yellow, preliminary planning configurations for a new runway. So, we wanted to just document that for you. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on 3B addendum number two? Yeah? Ms. Bailey, you have any comments on this one?
Since I just got this before, I don't, I'm, my one thing I'm trying to figure out based on the comment and then your follow-up response is that it seems like you're addressing both the WWU treatment facility and Point Warrens Off on the left, but you're only addressing one on the right in your response. And so, I'm wondering why that was the case, but I can't, is there an answer to that?
Yes, this is addendum number two to 3B, and the 3B, 3B supplement and 3D addendum number one covers the Point Warrens Off Park issue. This covers that missing piece of information, consideration about the sewer treatment plant.
One comment I have, and maybe a motion here. We just received this one here. We've got another session that will be forthcoming. Can we table this particular one to the next session? Give us time to digest this.
Right, so you just, you got the, it's the yellow that you got, you know, right?
I get it.
Sure. I mean, I don't, you know, there's going to be plenty.
When they come back, we get to say anything you want about anything you want.
Yeah, it's going to be a three-week deliberation. No, it's, I mean, so, but you'd like it to continue to be reflected as no action until we get to the next meeting?
Let's get to the next meeting.
That's fine.
Let's carry this one over to the next meeting.
Okay, let's carry that one over.
I think there's enough.
Next one is 3.
I don't think we need to.
3S. And are there any, let me find it first. Anyone wishing to consider amendment to land use policy 11? Staff, can you just read us policy land use 11 right now? Andre, if you get, you know you don't have it. I thought you had the plan. Tom, you looking that up?
I have it online. I'd have to look it up on my phone. It's the previous draft, so, but we can do that for you if we come back to this.
Okay, come back to 3S and just read that for us, please. 5H addendum number two.
Did we pass over 4F? I notice it's green on my sheet.
I don't have 4F. I don't see a 4.
4F is commuter rail stations. That was tabled. The commission was, did not come to agreement on that item, and is waiting to deal with that later.
Thank you.
Okay, gotcha.
That's what the deal with them later is look like.
Split decision. So, 5H. 5H addendum number two. It's on page 87 and 88. Accessory dwelling units, quantitative goals and actions.
Fairview Community Council pointed out that the land use plan map draft didn't have a, the public hearing draft didn't quantify the housing capacity of the land use plan, how that related to the housing need, and specifically ADUs, the potential quantitatively of ADUs to pitch in and help meet that need. Secondly, a relatively recent report, 2014 Analysis of Impediments to Affordable Housing in Anchorage by Susan Fiesen, who is, I believe, a participant in housing in Anchorage, is, has, did research and made recommendations as to encouraging accessory dwelling units. And this response documents that, first, the plan's policies and actions do in fact attempt to carry out Ms. Fiesen's recommendations, and accessory dwelling units are on our radar. We have also quantified the, an estimated impact of accessory dwelling units on meeting our housing need, which in short is about 21,000 housing units is projected, and what housing types, market types that contributes the most to. And we wanted to provide that to you. A more complete set of numbers for the overall housing capacity by single-family, compact housing, multifamily housing types, we will be bringing that forward to you here for your next meeting deliberations. And you will see how accessory dwelling units fit into that. But what we found was that, based on experience in other communities that have carried out reforms, make accessory dwelling units more doable for homeowners, is that it's not unlikely Anchorage could see a contribution of more than 1,000 accessory dwelling units within the planning horizon, and that that would be a significant help to us in our deficits for those affordable, single-family-type housing types. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Can you clarify, is Fairview saying that they'd like to see accessory dwelling units, or they're concerned about the impact of accessory dwelling units?
I believe they're trying to say that they're important, and they would like to see that the plan is providing a target that we can reach for. Thank you.
Does the plan talk about the existing code, whether we're friendly to ADUs or not, and advocate examining that in any way?
No, I don't think so in much detail. I believe there is, it touches on accessory dwelling units in the policy section very In the policy section on page 13, the plan recommends allowing and encouraging more compact types of housing choices, including small-lot cottage homes, accessory dwelling units, attached dwellings, small multifamily buildings, et cetera.
So, that gives you the policy directive to look at whether they're allowed enough, right?
And then in the action plan, it follows up on that on page 55, strategy six. It's a strategy about mending the regulations to allow more infill housing types, and I don't see accessory dwellings, yes, there they are. And then in, following that strategy in action four, four-dash-eight, it is to amend Title 21 to ease current restrictions that currently deter compact housing types such as ADUs and townhouses.
Okay, great. So, two other questions or comments, first from Mr. Walker, then Mr. Spinelli, or now from Mr. Spinelli.
Yeah, I'm good.
You mentioned looking at ADU policies for other communities, and then looking at our ADU policy. Was there any comment about our size limitation of 650 square feet being maybe too small or restrictive?
Where is that, where is that, is that in the ADU section?
Yeah, Title 21.
A minimum size?
Maximum size.
Maximum size. Yeah, I'm building some apartments above three-story or three-car garages, they're 900 square feet, right? I mean, it's not an ADU because it's a multifamily lot, but it would be a nice AD, it would be a really nice ADU.
I'm doing an ADU above a three-car garage, and we actually had to cut it back to create a bunch of deck that they didn't necessarily want, but it didn't, we were going to be over the max limit, so.
Yeah, so that, so that speaks to the limitations that we have already, and it sounds like there's enough actions in the plan calling for a review. It's just, we don't get to sort of start dealing with it until we get through this stuff, right?
It sure does, and Susan Fiesen reports, names some of the specific ways that we can reform, and I believe size limitations was one. The plan doesn't get to that level.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. Walker?
Well, so that was my question earlier, was about, are there, is there anything in code that is going to bite us on this later? And I was not aware of this 650-square-foot limitation, and it seems like if the idea is to generate more affordable housing options, having a bunch of single-bedroom 650-square-foot ADUs peppered all over Fairview isn't really going to cut it. I mean, you're going to have a bunch of college kids staying there, but you're not going to be able to accommodate families or couples, really. Should we address this 650-square-foot thing now? I mean, now that we're talking about it and thinking about it, should we make a recommendation on that?
So, you know, I think that's the commission's call. What I heard from Mr. Davis is several places where we say, "Look at the current restrictions that exist in Title 21 and revise them." And you could logically say that if you went through and said, "I'm going to look up what the current rules are for ADUs," and understand whether, and understand also that that was not without controversy just getting what we have, right? I mean, there's a reason why it was, you know, it was, it was a baby step, right? As I recall, it was Doug Van Etten's ordinance way back when. So, that'd be my, I think you're getting too far down into it, but I think as long as the plan clearly states that those are the things that frankly, those are pretty, they're pretty obvious to check off. You know, this gets adopted, someone just analyzes it. I just pulled a handful of codes today that was looking at ADUs in other communities. It wouldn't be that hard to analyze ours against someone else's and say, "Hey, we're too restrictive here, we're not restrictive enough over here, let's try something else." That's my thought.
Okay.
But you're welcome to add some other language either here or during another point that's more specific.
Okay.
Ms. Parker?
I think just to reiterate, the order of things is that the code implements the plan, so if the plan is changed, then it merits taking a closer look at the code. And obviously, that's going to include researches. The whole idea of ADUs has matured over the past decade, and seeing what best practices currently are in other cities. But again, the code has to come after the plan.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Great discussion. I will reflect that the chief priority coming out of the plan update down in Juneau was more housing. What would be really helpful, I think, to the staff team is that you keep your cheat sheet of recommended priorities for when we wrap up and say, "What do you want this team to be coming out of that gate first, you know, first year, second year, third year? And how important is it to address this issue?" Because we can, you know, we will get down to those kind of issues in plan implementation for you, but it'd be great to have that sense of priority going forward to the assembly. How do you see it? You deal with this every day. How do you see that as a priority of things that we need to do? Plus, think about how it's going to overlay with transit development changes, and now we're going to have 20-minute, we're going to have potentially a 20-minute corridor on Tudor that never existed. Well, is that a good place now to start putting ADUs on Tudor? And should those ADUs be a little bigger? And maybe there's another way to get there? So, how do you want to prioritize that? So, keep the big picture in mind, recommending, you know, simple but strong recommendations. So keep the big picture in mind, recommending, you know, simple but strong recommendation of prioritized actions.
Good feedback. I mean, I asked a couple of weeks ago for how to bring forward the highlights from staff's perspective, but I think to ask for priorities from our perspective, too, as we get towards adoption, I think is a really good suggestion. I also would just say, back to ADUs, that Sitka has a campaign where they have marketing materials right now, "ADUs for you," and it's really kind of cool. So, Mr. Davis, go ahead.
Yes, the previous draft plan, that February 29, 2016, community discussion draft, separated the ADU action item out from the other small lot housing action items. If ADUs is of interest to the commission and it's important to you that it, you know, break out as a separate action item, there's no, there's no reason why we can't break it back out. It addressed, very briefly, reforming the ADU land use regulations and requirements and creating a permit review assistance program and user guide. So if there's interest by the commission to break, break an action item out for ADUs and without getting too specific, dealing with some of the main issues, you know, that'd be fine, too.
Do you can remember that, Mr. Walker? If you want to divide it out? Yeah? Okay, I'm going to, when I, I thought when I'd get to the bottom, I'd call them two, I was going to take a brief recess, but could we go back to Three S? Do you have that language for us, so we can finish that up?
Yes, what was that? Policy eleven?
Yep.
Okay. Maybe give us a little more time.
Okay. I'm going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and power through the rest.
Even if you did in college.
Column number three.
I just dated myself.
Eight M. Wait, I'm showing eight M, but I'm not even showing it in green. Oh, there's an eight M in green.
Yeah.
Any issues with eight M? The first eight M, the green eight M? Everybody good with basically what we're doing is taking out the Office of Economic and Community Development and putting PMNE as the lead agency? Everybody good?
Just kind of makes sense.
Good? Okay, eight O. Well, it's yellow. Yellow's making me nervous, it's something I haven't seen before.
Yeah.
So refer to your supplement, please.
Supplement.
Eight, eight O is in green there with some additional yellow.
Okay.
So we can use that as the base. Basically, the plan introduces the small area planning process as a strategy, a new strategy, page fifty-six, I think. And we heard comments from current planning staff, as well as some of the community councils, as well as our own comments eventually, that we probably needed to flesh out more what that was after talking to the commission earlier. So we offer some, more language for page fifty-six, a new paragraph, it's underlined there, to better detail, describe it. And then we offer a new action item to basically add a new code item to flesh out what a small area implementation plan is. And it will take a lot of information used in the Girdwood chapter, which has two different master plan processes, which we felt were closest to this concept. So we probably will refer to those quite a bit.
But they're pretty complicated.
Yes, we won't follow that part of it.
Good answer. My only comment here is, I think it's, it can be a great tool, but it needs to be done in the right way. It can't be overly specific, but it has to have the right, the right level of specificity. So I think when you do that, working closely with, whether it's university or some developers, as well as community members, when you craft that, to know that you're creating something that's the right amount of detail, I think, would be helpful. Anybody have any objection to what's proposed? How many times has the Girdwood Development Master Plan been used?
I don't know for sure, at least three or four times.
Has it?
Yeah.
Is it all HLB stuff, or has it been on the private side, too?
I think some private side, mostly HLB.
Okay. Any objection to what's proposed in eight O? Okay, looks good. Eight, well, eight U is what I, is eight T in the supplement, so that's what we've added?
Yes, that's been added.
This looks like a, just a small, short text amendment?
That's correct. It's a text amendment to clarify the action item to develop a mixed-use multifamily district based on comments from current planning division.
This is just where our four A is kind of too far, too intense, and you want something else that, that's, that's not quite that intense, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm all for that. Anybody have any issues with this directive? Okay, hearing none. Eight T is good. Eight U, back to the main packet. Just this DCM keeps popping up.
Moving its ugly head.
I'm not even sure I understand the issue. Someone understands, can someone, can someone break it down?
Mr. Chairman, John Cecil. As I recall, the issue, we, I don't know if we heard this verbally from them, or if, I think it was in writing from their comments, that they wanted to ensure that the, the public had an opportunity to comment on the DCM through the public hearing process and that it, because it is being proposed to go through planning, zoning, and then the assembly for the first time. So whereas before, it's been used primarily administratively. So I think what I got from their comments was that they wanted to ensure that the public did have an opportunity to comment on this.
Which we've done, and then we talked a lot last month, or last time, about what constituted changes that needed to go back through the whole process, as I recall, right? I'm not sure where we even landed on that.
Then the other question is, they'll have, after, say, Chapter Two, that we looked at the other day, that will go to the assembly, and there'll be another chance for public comment there, is that true?
Yeah, yeah. So I think this is taken care, if anything, my concern is the, I think, the opposite of the chambers. I think by over, like codifying all this stuff, you make it hard to change anything fluidly. I think that's going to come back and bite us. Okay, any issues, any other comments on that one, before we go to ten H? Ten H, Fish Creek Neighborhood Correction. Is there a map that goes along with this one, or is this just a descriptor?
Yes, there's a map. It's the first map, ten H, and you will see the area outline in black with ten H annotated by it in the far upper-left corner. And it is a change recommending, changing the land use designation for that area from single-family and two-family, which is the lighter yellow, to up one level to compact mixed residential low, which is the mustard color, and which matches the current zoning, and.
Gotcha. Any issues with that? And so you've shown the colors the way that it would be changed to, yes?
That's correct, and that's our pattern on all these maps.
Okay. Any objection to the proposal under ten H? Okay, ten K.
Ten K is illustrated on the next issue response map, issue response items, ten K, ten L. Ten K deals with the northwest, the area just to the northwest of the Minnesota and International Airport Road interchange. It's the SBS industrial area and the trucking freight industrial area to the south of that, to the south of Northwood Elementary. The southern area of ten K is one thing, and the northern area of ten K is another thing. The southern area of ten K is the first thing I'll speak to, and that's, the existing plan for the area and the land use plan map draft designated that southern area, ten K, as residential and institutional. And we believe that was a mistake. We researched the property and the use and the zoning, and we believe it's going to remain industrial and a part of that trucking area, and recommend that it be designated in the light industrial shown.
Okay, any issue with the southern ten K?
No.
Okay, the northern ten K?
The northern ten K is also recommended in the draft plan to be designated for light industrial, to consolidate the, the shape and area of the, the industrial area. One thing that the land use plan map seeks is appropriate opportunities to consolidate the industrial land supply. The area is zoned residential and includes single-family and two-family homes. The area is an extension of the residential zone into the industrial area. The plan recommends to redesignate the future long-term use of that area from residential to industrial, and make up the loss elsewhere in the bowl. The, the single-family, two-family homes are primarily middle to older structures and back up to the industrial uses. The result would be the loss of some residential housing and the gain of some industrial and then forming a more squared-off consolidated industrial area to the east, residential to the west. This is one of, in general, backing off from the specific item, where we determined the land use plan map was making a substantive change from previous plans and zoning, we wanted to point that out to the commission and provide the commission that awareness that might make informed recommendation as to those changes the land use plan map made. This was not raised, you as in response to a public comment, but we wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Does Taft go through there? Is it a street?
Yes, Taft is very much the active street, and often it's the north-south street that folks will take to get from Tudor to the, you know, Spinard Rec Center. If you're going to a meeting, or, you know, racquetball court there, you often drive down Taft, and, yeah.
So let me ask you, if this were to pass and this had this industrial land use designation, and someone bought, you know, three of those lots right in the middle, and they came in for a rezoning just on those three lots, they'd have a compelling case as it comes to the land use plan map, right?
They would, if their proposed rezoning met the minimum area requirements for a rezoning. Either it be abutting that resident, or, excuse me, abutting the industrial zone, or 1.75 acres.
It just kind of strikes me as one that's all or nothing, rather than piecemeal. You know, in terms of implementing it. You know, if you just implement one or two, you know, a couple lots at a time, painful drip. Anyone else have comments on that one? I imagine the neighbors would have some comments, but, and the issue from the commission at this level, squaring off that industrial district? Brian?
I guess I'll go ahead and mention, like, on the previous, the ten K to the south, that is, like you said, that is currently the trucking areas, but it's next to the park. It's also the monastery schools right there off Northwood, too. Is that other lot that, that's just south of the monastery school, is that a undeveloped lot? It's mostly wetlands?
Yes, it is. It's zoned R4SL, and it is an undeveloped lot. I'm not aware of the wetlands, what the wetland situation is. It might be peat, but I'll defer.
Or peat.
It's peat, not wetlands. Well, it's wet.
Andres looked at it already.
Andres looked at it.
I guess by making this, this ten K, or that would, I guess, keep, get momentum going for, to making, that'll probably eventually end up being an industrial, too, I guess, as opposed to more park and more schools, or institutional, I guess, is what it was.
Well, it's, I mean, the question is, if you think that's the way it should go, then that's the way that it ought to be reflected on the plan map, rather than something that would be awfully hard to develop residentially.
Yeah, so I support probably the industrial change.
Okay, any objections to the, either the north or the south, industrial designations highlighted by ten K? Okay, seeing none, we move to ten L.
Can I add one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The hotel is industrial, is that, is that right or wrong?
I think that's wrong. I hadn't noticed that before you pointed out. The zoning may be industrial. I may have to get back to you on that one. I'll get back.
That's just south of that.
I'll find out what the deal is there. I've forgotten.
Okay.
That's the microtel, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It might have been a conditional use in the industrial zone, we'll find out.
Windermere subdivision, ten L, Tudor and Minnesota. Is that what we're talking about? No? No, okay, I got you. There it is, on the same map.
This neighborhood is currently zoned and in the West Anchorage District Plan, designated in a way that would be the single and two-family. I believe the zoning is R2A. Yes. It's, I'm referring it to it as the Windermere subdivision. The land use plan map recommends this neighborhood be designated compact mixed residential low, which is the mustard-colored land use designation, one notch up in housing opportunity or housing intensity. The implementing zone for that recommended mustard is R2M, and is the zoning district to the north of Tudor. The land use plan map recommends this in, as a long-term change, in light of the neighborhood's plating pattern, the size of its lots, and, excuse me, some of the residential development in here is not single-family or two-family. The neighborhood's position next to the school and is closer to Tudor. The drawback in the area currently is that its infrastructure is poor, the road and alley, and there is no sidewalk. So this would be a long-term land use designation to leverage the platted built, platted pattern and make more housing opportunity in the future, similar to many neighborhoods in Spinard and South Edition, zoned R2M. Thank you.
So is the land use designation basically saying we'd like to see more than two units built on these 8,000-square-foot lots, or is it saying that we'd like to see these lots consolidated and aggregated and see larger multifamily structures in this area? Because that, to me, fundamentally is the difference. Does it maintain this platted area, which I think you're saying can accommodate more than a duplex, which is questionable? Or are you saying, hey, we ought to assemble larger chunks of it and make eight plexes out of it?
That's a good question. I suppose you would have to combine two lots to get more than two units on a 7,500-square-foot lot in the R2M.
No, I think you can get three, right?
Can you get three?
You just...
That was my intent.
The rules don't, but my point is, is that it's, it changes the character if you're talking about a multifamily on a one lot versus, you know, a bunch of assembled parcels. And that's, to me, where you get into this really, these really strange development patterns that we have in Anchorage, where you have the little duplex next to the eightplex next to the four, just, that's the stuff that doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't want to get into a situation where we do it again to a little pocket neighborhood. You know, and so the other thing that I have with that comment is, it's a perfect example of, should that just be an area-wide rezone if there's an impetus to rezone it, or do we really expect people to kind of piece it bit by bit by bit? To me, the land use plan map ought to be making, helping us with those sorts of things.
One possibility is to, Anchorage is missing that zone district tool that allows for a neighborhood to have some of the housing variety of a small lotting pattern like South Edition or parts of Spinard, where you do get smaller multifamily buildings without presenting the neighborhood with a possibility of eight plexes next to those small buildings. One possibility is creating such a tool, possibly out of an existing zone.
I guess, I would ask the rest of the commission, does anyone object, I mean, hopefully understand where I'm coming from here, because I think this is, when I tour people through Anchorage neighborhoods that are not from here, they don't get it. They're like, how do you have this next to this? Doesn't make any sense. What's the pattern that you have in your And we clearly did a lot of that when we were growing really fast, right? And to me, it's about lot size as much as it's about zoning. You know, if I have a, an R4 parcel that's 7,000 square feet, you know, that's still a pretty small development versus a half-acre R2M site is a very different type of development. It changes fundamentally what that neighborhood is. You have, if I just look at the plat map, it's all, it's all the same lots, except for one, that's a double lot, maybe, in that whole neighborhood. And so I guess my question to you, and what I would ask the commission, is, can we ask this question, is, what is the intent for this as an example? Is it that we maintain the lot pattern as-is? Is it that we area-wide rezone it? Is it that we allow lots to be consolidated? Help us understand what that is, so that if that, someone that lived in that neighborhood could ask, well, what do you, what do you mean by this change? What is really intended? Well, if it means you have a duplex, you might be able to add an accessory dwelling unit and add a third unit. That's one thing, right? Versus that eightplex next door to my house.
Yes, and that's the intent, to use the existing lotting pattern as a way to get some of these smaller, missing-middle, multifamily housing types. You know, no more than three to four units per lot. And like many recommended changes on the land use plan map, this area would be more ideally implemented through an area-wide type rezoning than piecemeal. We will be bringing forward a strategy to expand our target area rezonings program, but that will still leave many areas of the land use plan map, including this, without a target area rezoning plan.
So if you could just capture those issues that I brought forward there, and just say the existing lot pattern and the area-wide rezone issue otherwise, you know, and sort of how, just help me understand that, because the flip side of that other piece that you talked about, which was the lack of infrastructure, if this doesn't undergo intensive redevelopment or replating, that infrastructure's not going in there. You won't see those sidewalks built unless the municipality decides to build those sidewalks in there. There's no trigger for it. So I'm just hung up in how we get to where we think we're going to get, and that's, seems like as good of an example to try to understand it as any.
I think you're going to run into the same issue under that.
Well, they're all there, sure. It's implementation ultimately. So I think, generally, I think there's a consensus that they're fine, that everyone's fine with the designation. Help us answer the how. Next one is 11H?
11H.
11A is the one that's a split decision that comes back to us later. We have to debate that one outside of the committee, the whole, I think, or just, or just we have to, when we have it all in front of us, we could go through them again and say, do we still want that to be reflected as a, as a split decision?
Because that one's very similar to the last one you just discussed. In fact, it's almost a mirror, but the land use designation.
Let's just keep that one as-is, because I didn't, I didn't look at that one again.
Mr. Chair, the list tonight is for the second 11H. For some reason, we have two of them.
Yeah, the green 11H.
The green, yes.
Go for it.
So this one may be similar as well, but hopefully it's a little more clear-cut. We're over off of East Northern Lights, north of Northern Lights on Wesleyan Corridor. And this actually arose with, as the transit department's new bus service plan came into being, and identified Northern Lights as a 15-minute headway corridor. Probably once they immediately implemented, it'll turn to that. So because of that, these parcels, all undeveloped or mostly undeveloped, are all of a sudden within a walking distance of the transit, as well as somewhat walking distance to the neighborhood center to the southeast. So really, this is a little bit of housekeeping as well as a land use change. We recommend changing it to reflect the current zoning in the area, which is R2M, and taking it from the single-family, two-family to the compact mixed-use residential low, mixed, sorry, compact mixed residential low.
There's quite a bit of elevation in that area.
A couple of the lots have a little elevation, yes.
They're challenging lots. Anyone have an issue with the proposal to make it the, what is that, Mr. Davis, the mustard color? Is that, is that what I got?
That's correct.
Golden's mustard.
Okay. Any issues with 11H? Okay, 11I?
Yes, there are two 11Is. The first 11I is there on page 132 in the middle, I'm sorry, up top. Northern Lights Boniface Neighborhood Center. It is the area pictured on issue-response map 11H and 11I in pink. It contains two parts. The southern part is simply a correction. The land use plan map had designated some commercially-zoned lots, two there you see, the very bottom of the map, as residential, and is simply a correction to bring those back into the neighborhood center. They're commercial. The more substantive issue is that the land use plan map had designated a lot in the northwest block of that neighborhood center, north of the strip mall with the Goodwill store. Designated that lot that's fronting on 26th, you see it, a long rectangular lot. That's a multifamily, I believe it's like a townhouse or perhaps a multifamily development, currently zoned R3. That one lot is zoned R3. There's no other R3 zoning around it. The East Anchors District Plan simply designates it as part of the neighborhood center, pink. The draft land use plan map simply followed the east plan, did likewise. Planning review that, what we recommend is to add the stipple pattern, the white stipple pattern, to that entire block, in the interest of encouraging, if there is to be future redevelopment of that parcel, that includes that parcel, that redevelopment included residences, so we, so we don't have a total net loss of housing land base and housing units. Areas currently zoned commercial in that pink area with the stipple pattern, they are not required to, they would not be required by this plan to include residential units. Certainly, they could be encouraged to do so through incentives, but there would be not a code requirement that the, those lots currently zoned commercial, which are all the pink ones, except for the one I mentioned, that long went along 26th, that it would not require those commercially-zoned lots to include residential. Essentially, we're recommending to add the stipple pattern to account for that lot and the potential loss of residential units. We want to avoid somebody just coming through, taking out that old housing, rezoning it, and putting up, you know, just office building, and there you go. We wanted to encourage this, this site, this area along Northern Lights, the transit corridor, to have a future, maybe a multi-story, three-to-four-story commercial, with perhaps even some residential mixed use somewhere as part of it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on that one? I was confused, because you said they wouldn't be compelled to do it, but you'd like them to consider it. That's, there's no reg, there's no requirement with the...
That's correct. This would, this plan were to be implemented would direct there be incentives, encouragement for them to include residential, but at this point, there's no, no difference for the commercially-zoned lots. For the lot to the north, I think the plan is expressing that were there to be a proposed rezoning or change the status of that lot, that the policy would be that while commercial is allowed, that there would be some kind of expectation that there be residential as part of a redevelopment there on that lot, or including that lot. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions on the 11I, north or south of Northern Lights? Okay, before we turn the page on that map, Mr. Davis, I just, I just direct you to the, since I'm looking at it, the intersection of Boniface and Sapphire, which is just north of there, the larger lot that's not the condominiums is a, is a church, that's an underutilized church that needs to be redone. I know for a fact they'd like to redevelop that at some point and have some higher level of housing, just something to put in your kitty and decide whether or not that lot, should it redevelop, ought to be able to accommodate more than an eightplex.
Maybe a pink-white stipple?
Would add, Andre wants the stipple on top of it, too. The point is, is I think it'd be a really good R3 parcel, but I don't, take it or leave it. It's just an opportunity.
We'll take a look. Thank you.
Are we on the second, 11I, the second 11I, we, Mr. Walker?
I had a quick question. It's actually not relating to 11I, but, but actually to something in that vicinity.
Mm-hmm. I started something, didn't I?
Well, a little bit, yeah. So I see that the, the former Boniface Center there is highlighted as a community facility or institution, but that's a privately-owned building that's leased to the Anchorage School District. So have you guys gotten any input from the owner of that structure as, you know, I mean, effectively, if the, you know, we're putting this on the plan map this way, and then the lease gets terminated or expires or otherwise goes away, and now suddenly that could affect their ability to dispose of the property? Just thinking out loud here.
That's a good point.
Yes, we've made contact with the owner, GL Properties, and haven't had a conversation about this property in particular. Where am I? The land use plan map is just following the East Anchors District Plan, and I believe when the East Anchors District Plan was, was done, they were looking out at a long-term lease, and so within the life of the plan, they were anticipating this being the administrative center and school through the life of the plan. But what we, we can take a look at the lease and see if that also applies to 2040. We'll do that and check back in with GL. Thank you.
Point is, is it's just the less E that denotes it, community center. It's built as a commercial mall. It looks like a commercial mall. It's, I mean, from a use standpoint, I mean, I agree, I tend to agree. Could be just as easily a commercial mall with some, something built out along Northern Lights if it's got...
Right.
Plenty of parking.
Well, and frankly, the educational use was kind of a, I think it was a redevelopment.
Yeah, for sure.
But if that use moved on, now I think what's going on in that neighborhood is, it would probably be best if it went back to some sort of retail use. I mean, they need something in that area.
Well, let's... Thank you. I live in that neighborhood.
Well, here's, here's a question. How is it taxed?
It's, the, I don't think there's any exemption for privately-held real estate that's occupied by a public institution.
So look how it's taxed.
I think it has to be held by the public institution or the nonprofit in order to be tax-exempt, if I'm not mistaken.
So they're going to look at it, you can also ask that they create a separate line to make sure they capture it, if you want.
And this might also fall through to all the charter schools, because there's a number of charter schools that probably need to be looked at to see how their landlords are based, as opposed to just arbitrarily calling them a school.
Yes, most charter schools are in strip malls, and we will, we will double-check, but I believe that in most cases, that the strip mall charter schools, we just designated as the zoning it was in. Well, we can double-check that, too.
Well, this is a, there's a charter school designation.
Yeah, but I think it's because it's ASD that it's getting that color, not just because there's a charter school. I think that's...
Well, and I think there's administration there, too, so there's a lot of ASD stuff.
That's what I mean, it's the whole building.
Right.
So my point, Brandon, was if you wanted that to be called out as a separate line item as an issue, one way or the other...
Yeah, can we do that?
Then you know it's going to be picked up.
Yes.
Thanks.
I, yeah.
The second 11I, I'm not sure that we actually have a map for it, is that right?
No map, it's a correction.
So any, any issues with that second 11I? Appears that it's a, I don't know, I'll defer to Danielle, if it's a park or not a park or wants to be a park, one of those things, but it's, it's green on the land... but it's, it's green on the land use plan map. Everybody good? 11K, the Zamorillo Vill site west of Lake Otis and Tudor. Mr. Walker?
So I don't have any objection to this, but I, I think I asked this question before, and I, I apologize, I don't recall, but I think one of the staff members had mentioned that the Heritage Land Bank may be pursuing some sort of assemblage in this area, that they were gradually acquiring these lots to assemble them for some purpose. Does that sound familiar at all?
I'm sorry, are we talking about the Zamorillo site? Uh, no.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I was, I read Zamorillo, and then I skipped over the actual location, so we're talking about a totally different Zamorillo site here. I'm sorry. I am, yes.
So you're recommending it be shown as, as residential, even though the likelihood that it ever be anything is sort of questionable, right?
The site is challenged, yes.
Yeah.
We basically reflect the current zoning and what the neighborhood preference is.
Okay. Any objection to that, 11K?
Just to clarify, so this is the, this is the wetland site that's...
It's former, most of its former wetlands west of the mall, south, of the northwest corner of the intersection.
Right, right. And there isn't any component of that that's developable?
There is.
And, and who, who owns it?
I don't recall. It's been back and forth from banks a few times.
I'm, I'm going off of memory, and this goes back to probably the eighties, but some of that area may have been used for a wetlands trade, trade-off, and as I recall, that may have been a trade-off area for some other development elsewhere for that designation.
Yeah, if I could clarify, that was the, one of the first wetland permits in Anchorage that had mitigation required for it. So in order to get this permit, Zamorillo had to create wetlands somewhere else.
Mr. Walker, you got a comment about that one?
So obviously, I had misidentified this one initially, and so I scratched some notes on it and moved on, so I'm getting caught up here now. But this says here that it's regarding the north, the vacant property west of the strip mall at the, on the northeast corner of Tudor and Lake Otis. So the northeast corner of Tudor and Lake Otis is a Walgreens? Are we, we're talking about the northwest?
Northwest corner, yeah.
Okay, which is a Zamorillo-built mall. Okay, so I just want to make sure we're talking about the right thing. Now, if we go to the property that fronts on Tudor immediately west of that, what we'll call the Zamorillo Mall, which is now owned by Walter Hickel, not that Walter Hickel, but a different Walter Hickel, he also owns the site to the west of it, which I think has quite a bit of uplands there. So are we, I guess I just want to make sure we're not damaging, you know, their ability to develop whatever uplands happen to be left there, so... Because I think, didn't they, they actually have a parking lot that they developed there recently, so...
I think that the, there was a temporary parking lot attached to the west end of the existing parking lot in the mall. But that's all on the private property, and I'm not sure what you're, I don't follow what you're talking about with damaging the site.
So 11K, if you look at the map, we've got this, you know, odd-shaped polygon, and this, and there's, it encompasses the, you know, eastern component of two separate lots, and the southern of those two lots is privately held. I don't know about the...
I think they're both private, and the western half of those two lots is, is preserved wetlands.
So, so I guess what I'm getting at here is they have a, this parking lot, like, is that parking lot an acceptable accessory use in the R3 district?
I don't think so. I'm not sure.
But they permitted it when they built it.
You're talking to the wrong people. Can I ask a question on subject two? Since these are parcels, and one's yellow and one's green, but split zone parcels are illegal, why are you recommending that?
It's a split land use designation is what it is, which, because it's, it's, like, because it is wetland, yes?
Yes, we're just reflecting the likely land use pattern. This isn't zoning. It's the plan.
So I, I can't tell where you're going with that, Mr. Walker. Are you suggesting that, that it ought to be more an extension of the mall, because that's kind of what it looks like, or you're just questioning why they have that orphaned parking lot?
We're, well, so, so what we're doing here, I mean, we're, we're carving this in stone that this is gonna be an R3 property into perpetuity.
So it's, no, well, unless they change it. The point is, is it's R3 zoning. They had originally put it as commercial corridor, right? Is that right? Was your original designation something other than residential?
Yes, it was a part of the commercial corridor in the, in the, it is a part of the commercial corridor in the public hearing draft.
And because of comments that you got from, who? Did you, I mean, was it the UMed Community Council that provided the comments, or just...
No, this is from Planning Department's own review in, in response to the housing capacity findings, where we are seeing a challenge meeting the, the need projected for certain housing types.
Okay, no, that, just that, then we know where it's going from. So, so I got Mr. Strike and Mr. Spinelli. Are you guys still in the queue? Okay. Maybe you guys can use the same mic down there.
Right, right.
So, Mr. Walker, what do you, what do you, where do you want to go with this?
Well, okay, I guess what I, here's where I'm coming from, is the entire, so there's two parcels there. They're both owned by the same people. They paid good money for them. They're surrounded by commercial uses. It seems to me that logic would dictate, at the very, very least, that you've got a complementary commercial use on a major thoroughfare that is what we're calling the Zamorillo Mall, that at least this southern part of 11K, I mean, that seems like that should be a commercial use to me. I mean, it's, I just can't imagine that being anything else, and the market is never gonna put an apartment building on that site.
So you're asking the, the commission to come along with your, your belief that it ought to be shown in the same pinkish color as the rest of it?
I think so.
Okay. Anyone want to weigh in?
It's gotta be a stipple.
No, it's a stipple. Mr. Spinelli?
I mean, it looks like it's separated from the residential area by stream and wetlands.
Okay.
And it's probably, I don't know what it's used for, but looking at the aerials, it looks like they probably plowed their parking lots though there, so I would say it's being used in some sort of commercial fashion, I would guess. So I would...
Yeah, but that's not what you're asked to evaluate. You're asked to evaluate what it should be 20 years from now. It's crystal ball time.
I'm not that smart.
All right. Mr. Spores?
I don't claim to be that smart either, thank you, but I do agree with Commissioner Walker that it should stay part of the commercial corridor.
Okay. Ms. Bailey?
Um, I think my main comments on this is just that it's, we're not deciding right now what this landowner wants to use it for. If it turns out that they come back and they have a good reason for it to be expanded commercial, this isn't gonna be set in stone that it has to be residential. I'm, um, I, I can see arguments both. I, I don't really think it's that big of a deal, honestly. Like, I don't think it's our job right now to say what this landowner wants to use it for and what they should be changing it for. Like, that's getting way more specific than the land use plan map.
May I speak to that?
Except staff. Yeah, go ahead.
They are already using it for commercial, so, so, I mean, they've already spoken, right? I mean, they're, they're speaking to us through their, their use of the site.
But my point on that is more so what is the aspirational use of what this should be? If there is criteria that's saying that we need housing, that this is near the UMed and that there's a housing need and not a commercial need, then that's the reason for it to be aspirational, for it to be housing. If they later down the road want to change that, then that would allow it. It seems like that's what the long-term vision is. Again, I don't, I don't really have an argument, I'm not gonna hold up anything on this either way, but I, I think it's, we're supposed to be looking at aspirational and not what is the current user doing right now.
Okay. Mr. Davis, are you back in there?
Yes, Mr. Tobisch was going to mention something.
I was just gonna add some more information for you. This was one of the most contentious rezoning cases in, in the 1980s, and did not happen. It was not changed. They wanted to go to B3. They filled the site from the core permit before they got the rezoning and then left the land as it is. I don't, we'll have to check about the parking lot, whether it was a conditional use or what, because it's, it's not real clear. We didn't pursue that information. We can do that, but I just wanted to point that out.
Good history. All right.
Sorry, as far as land use to the west, is there some extremely dense apartments immediately west of this on Tudor, on Tudor Road?
Right, but they're buffered by the wetlands, which we're calling unusable at this point or undevelopable, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Well, I don't know. I mean, my opinion stands. I would, you know, if we were not in the committee of the whole, I would make a motion on this.
And we might be, I mean, I can, I don't know, have we, have we voted on these issues before here, and if we carry a majority, we reflect it, or if we have any split, we should show it as split? I forget. We've been, we've been getting along for so long. So please, please represent, which means we have to come back and deal with it. So, Ms. Bailey, you will live out what you, which you didn't want to live out, which you said it wasn't that big of a deal, but, but that's okay. I think we just reflect it as split, and, and we'll deal with it. We just kicked this can. All right, these next ones are gonna go faster. I can feel it. 12B isn't even underlined. Anyone wishing to deal with 12B? Which map are we looking at here? The lap, is it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's actually, it's on your second, second one, second page, and it's the lower left-hand corner.
No, 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 no. We already dealt with that one, though, didn't we?
Not, not 12B. You did, you did 10, 10I or 10K, the two 10Ks and the 10I on that page, but not 12B.
Which one? So the change is from industrial to light industrial, commercial. We just changed it from darker gray to lighter gray? Is that right?
Yes, right? No, right? Or is it? It's the, I'm sorry, it's the other way around. It's from light industrial to heavy industrial, so from I1 to I2.
Changed the land use designation of the industrial enclaves from industrial to light industrial. So what am I missing?
At the, the issue, sorry, the issue is recommending to change the land use plan map designation from heavy industrial to lighter industrial. That's what the issue recommends.
Okay. Adjacent to residential makes sense to me. Everybody good? What, you got something?
I'm, so I'm confused. So those properties are currently zoned I1, which is light industrial. No, I'm looking at, I'm looking at it right now. They are. That's what I'm saying.
Yes, that's correct, and, and that the current zoning is I1. The, the public hearing draft, the public hearing draft land use plan map had recommended that area be designated straight industrial, the dark gray.
Oh, and straight industrial would be more like...
Which would have been implemented by the I2, and, and a planning review just found that incompatible with the neighborhood.
Okay, so we're just rolling back the previously proposed color on the map. We're not doing anything...
As it's zone.
Okay, gotcha. Perfect. That's, that, I understand that.
Okay, 12C.
The, second to last map in your map packet shows 12C. It's issue response items 11K and 11M map, and 12C is there on that map. It's in the far left-hand west side. It's the Waldron Family Homestead. The public comments regarding the public hearing draft land use plan map requested that the southern portion of the parcel, south of Fish Creek, Fish Creek cuts right through the parcel, has a, has a nice meadow around the creek. It bisects the parcel, and there you see that dark black line. That's the creek. The land use plan map designated all medium intensity, the darker, the brown color, and the public comments recommend, recommended that the southern part be designated in green, open space. The current zoning splits that parcel between R3 to the north, which is consistent with brown, and I believe R2A on the south part, which would be consistent with a single and two-family, light yellow pattern. But again, the land use plan map draft designated it all brown. Staff in plan review discovered that, or rediscovered for itself, that it was, the south half is currently zoned R2A. In light of the comment, in light of south side of the creek, and the current zoning, what, what we recommend is that the creek be a natural boundary between the higher-density, potentially apartment development to the north. The creek does include a wetland. I believe it's a B wetland. It's a natural boundary in the south of there, that a somewhat lower intensity residential be located south of the creek near Waldron Park. That would, that mustard color cross-references to R2M, and that, that's the recommended direction of issue 12C. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walker, then Mr. Strike. You in there?
So just to summarize this in my own words, all we're trying to do here is take the southern half and convert it from R2A to R2M.
From the perspective of current existing zoning?
Right.
Yeah, that would be the ultimate implementation.
This is totally an aside. This might be a thied question. Is there any way to access over that creek? I mean, with those, that's some pretty intense wetlands there. I mean...
Yes. They'd have to get a core permit, but the FD, is it the FDA building?
DEA.
DEA, sorry. Near there, obtain a permit from the court across the creek.
Okay.
So yes, they would probably issue a permit.
Okay, thanks.
And that was my question. The DEA is immediately to the west?
Yes.
And the property that's designated where the 12 is, where it's light green, it says park or natural area, wasn't that property listed for sale?
The dark green area is...
The light green.
The light green?
Uh-huh.
The, the area for sale is the area shown in brown. The light green is that wetland meadow area we see as we drive down Tudor. I can revisit that, but I believe that's...
I think there was a title sign on that property here as early, late as a year and a half ago.
The whole light green, from the other neighborhood, access from the, from the west. Yeah, they had a big, they had a big for sale sign on that.
The, the, I think Tom is correct. The for sale sign was only for the, this area that we're talking about that's identified as 12C. The, the light green area that is mostly a big meadow and a wetland is...
mostly a big meadow and a wetland is owned by the muni, as far as I know.
Sometimes people marketing for sale, properties for sale, put the sign in the middle.
And there is another, there's, the other thing you might be thinking of, Greg, is the Waldron Park site actually was for sale a while back, and-
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
The muni bought that recently.
Yeah.
And then the Boys and Girls Club owns another site on the other side of the DEA building.
I'm thinking of the big for-sale sign that was parked in the meadow right there off of Tudor Road.
Before I bring up stuff that's not even on our list, everybody okay with this designation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, my question has to do with the, the St. Mary's parcel. They're on the corner of Lake Otis and Tudor, and they did recently develop 15 units of housing and have indicated a desire to build additional housing to, to the west of that site, which presumably would be shown in other open space. And I wondered if that was, given their desire, I think there are some uplands through there. I know there's, it's challenging, but there are some, and then the additional access is challenging, but I know that's at least their stated goal is to develop housing stretching from that existing new development, the Thomas Center, whatever it's called, to the west.
We'll double-check that. It's, my recollection that that is Conservation Eastman area. That's why it's bright green. It's privately owned, but I can double-check that.
Could you do me a favor?
I think that's what, what's going on.
So if you could, you know, and you know Terry's wife was involved with St. Mary's on their project, so that'd be a good shortcut for you to figure that out. Okay. There are three other items. No, there's 12, is that, was that 12-C? No. That was 12-C, right? That was 12-C. There, there are four other items, neither of them underlined. I did not want, wish to pull them, so I'm gonna ask the group if you would like to discuss 13-F, 13-G, 13-H, or 13-I. Mr. Davis, what do you got for policy 11?
Uh, we, we've determined that that whole issue, I should never have written that up. I totally garbled that one. So I think what, what, the, the original comment wasn't, the original comment was addressed, the, the original comment was focused on the, the first draft land use plan from February 29, and those policies were subsequently totally overhauled for the public hearing draft, and I think the issue was resolved, and-
So, so can we leave it at this?
I should have done better editing and deleted 3S.
Okay, so you either, we're not gonna act on 3S. You're gonna evaluate whether you need to bring some version of 3S back to us or not.
Uh, we can do that, but we're-
Otherwise, you delete it.
Finding that it's just-
Okay.
-a staff garble.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Greg, are you back in the queue? So, okay, motion to, we will need to come out of the committee of the whole, made by Mr. Strike, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any objection? No objection to moving out of the committee of the whole. Main motion is on the floor. We do not have those last March dates picked right now, and frankly, I don't see how we'd be able to publicize to a date at this point. So I would entertain a motion to postpone to the first April meeting at this point.
Don't move.
What is that, April 4th?
You think you're a motion-
Mr. Walker, is a motion to postpone to April 3rd, seconded by Ms. Barker. Any objection?
I understand what you're making a motion about.
And it, because it looks pretty light. We could, we could deal with it then. Hearing, hearing no, no objection. Land use plan map is continued to April the 3rd. Mr. Walker?
I'm just waiting.
We beat you. Motion to adjourn from Mr. Strike, seconded by Mr. Walker. Meeting is adjourned.